Well, it's 5:30 and we'll call our meeting to order of the Aberdeen City Council for Monday, April 19th. Roll call, please. Carl? Councilmember Remley?
Here.
Ronain?
Here.
Lunsman?
Here.
Slate Hansen?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Bunsonus?
Olson?
Here.
Rux?
Here.
Mayor Leeson?
Here.
Welcome back from the Masters, Carl. Hope you enjoyed it. Join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I ask for a motion to approve the minutes, Ben advised that we need to change them. You have in front of you the minutes from last week and the way the page is set up for you there, about four fifths of the way down, the page with the number 17331 at the top where it says, "Motion by Ronain, seconded by Slate Hansen to amend 5643." That language and that paragraph was there because that was an intended amendment that came from the city attorney and they changed their mind before the meeting and asked us to substitute a different one for that which is the one at the top of the next page. So we're going to have to eliminate all of the language in that last 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 lines where it starts, "Amend section 5643." So cross that off. We're not asking you to approve that as part of the minutes. The other change we need to make is under section 5642. The new language that was requested by the city was offered as an amendment, 5642, and during that, councilmember Bunsonus made a motion to table which takes precedence over the amendment and the main motion. But the minutes say the motion failed for lack of a vote. Well, there wasn't a vote, but the motion didn't fail. The motion still lives when it comes back to us today. So cross off that line, "Motion failed for lack of a vote." So with those changes, I would request a motion to approve the minutes.
Move to approve the minutes as amended.
Second. Motion, Rux, second by Olson. Rob, did you have a question or?
No, sir.
Are you just going to make a motion? Okay. So with that, next is our open forum. Back from...
Do we even vote?
Oh, okay. Well, we need to vote on it then. The new minutes as we have, take a motion to approve them. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Freddie, you're up. Fred Robinson, back from Arizona. Talked to Freddie before the meeting and he regretted that he was not here to give us some advice on getting water off the airport, so would be the benefit of that tonight.
Thanks for allowing me to talk about the pump. I was with the group from the county that put a lot of effort into that agreement with the city and the county. I thought about it quite a bit while I was in Arizona and saw that you'd met. I just thought that sometimes we don't think out of the box. Sometimes we think, "There's water at the airport and we've got to get rid of it," for whether it be safety reasons or because there's water at the airport. As an old first responder, and I mean old, old, a school bus from Warner drives a township road with 10 feet of water in the ditch beside it. And the shore feature stopped, and I know that because I drove school buses for a few years, and it slides through the ditch and tips over. What's the fatality rate going to be from that? In 97, when we had the floods, there were five families where I live, I live just north of Mansfield, that couldn't get out. Ambulants couldn't get in, a fire truck couldn't get in. Dr. Vick, my neighbor's propane tank was almost empty and they couldn't get in. So there's just a lot of things to think about besides water at the airport. And that's basically all I wanted to say, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Questions?
Freddie, you and I, we had a nice conversation beforehand and we, one thing we discussed was, we haven't really established what constitutes a goose hazardous situation serious enough at the airport to take more serious steps, and that's something we'll have to figure out. We didn't really get a definitive answer on that from our pilots last week.
I mentioned to Mike that the Sportsman Association, if there was a problem out there with waterfowl, I'm quite certain if you went and asked for a little help, you'd probably get more people out there than you could handle anyway to get rid of the waterfowl. But I just, I know that there's some talk of changing this agreement. I just hope that everybody thinks outside the box other than just water at the airport.
Well, since you were in on it at the beginning, when the talks are progressing to do some changes, I'm sure you won't hesitate to help us.
Oh, no.
All right.
I'm pretty busy, but I'll work.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
We have Ray Bowe, you're also signed up. I'll give you a chance to talk as we get into our ashbore discussion here rather than do it in the open forum part of this, so. That brings us to old business. Ordinance 190301. This was offered for second reading and final adoption last week, but it was placed on the table by vote of the council. And so at this time, I would entertain a motion to remove that from the table.
So moved.
Go second.
Motion, Rux, second by Ronain. The proper procedure then at this point is to restate the motion and restate any amendments to the motion to get us back to the point we were at when we tabled it last week. Ron?
And I volunteered to try to do that because of the complexity that's entailed because of all of the changes, but initially, the initial motion is to approve ordinance number 190301 for second reading. And since that initial motion, the following amended amendments have been moved. The first motion was to delay, to replace lab with laboratory, as is referenced twice in the ordinance. That motion was approved. The second motion approved was to replace some language in 56-252/7 regarding proof of extized tax number. That was also made. Then the motion was tabled for two weeks or another week to allow for some additional changes, and then that was taken up. And at the following date, these motions were made and approved. One was to grandfather in existing services from the examination requirement. A second motion on that date was to put in language regarding new and renewal licenses, the waiver of examination on renewal, and give some guidance on license fee amounts. That was moved and approved. A third motion on that date was a definition of ashwood included in section 56-1. That was passed. A fourth motion on that date was regarding 56-33/3 with some language change regarding elmwood without the bark removed and any ashwood within the jurisdictional limits of the city. And then the motion as it sits today is a motion to replace section 56-42 with the language that's in the minutes, and I'll just restate that language. And that is, "Transporting ash trees prohibited to authorized collection sites. It is unlawful to transport any ash tree or part thereof or ash wood to any destination within the city limits, period. The city forester shall identify sites authorized as EAB waste collection sites for disposal of ash trees and wood." And as we concluded Monday's meeting, this is the last motion to amend that's on the table. After additional consideration, administration would recommend that you vote no on this particular motion and that we would propose some different language for the council.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion at this time to vote no on the existing motion that was in play when we tabled last week.
So you need a motion to deny the amendment?
To vote no on the amendment.
I've moved to deny the amendment.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second vice Slate Hansen. Carl, questions or comments on the motion to deny? All those in favor of the motion then, which will get us away from that last amendment we had last week? All those in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. That brings us now to the recommended amendment that we're going to hear from the city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm going to invite our forester to come forward so he can assist in the explanation. Excuse me. In the packet for the council, we did provide an update on all of the various amendments and proposed some additional language to replace section 56-42. And that language is as follows. Delete, of course, the existing language and put in this language. "It is unlawful to store or dispose within the city limits or transport to any destination within the city limits any ash tree or part thereof or ash wood, period. The city forester shall identify collection sites outside of the city limit for disposal of ash trees and wood." And that is the language that we would request be moved for a new amendment.
I'll move the new amendment.
Second. Motion, Ronain, and second by Olson on the new amendment. We might as well start.
Can we pop it up on the screens?
Sure.
Yeah. We might as well start, since we're going to get there anyway. Last week, there was a disagreement between some of our tree business people and our city forester over the need for what we're doing. So Aaron, why don't you start and tell us why you think we should do this, and then we'll give the tree people a chance to respond.
Okay, thank you. And I guess the whole goal behind this section of the ordinance is to slow the spread of the Emerald Ash Bore throughout our community. And by limiting the wood that comes in that could potentially be infested, that's the only way we're going to slow it from one side of Aberdeen to the other side. If we allow wood to just move freely, you're going to see within two, maybe three years, we're going to have an infestation throughout the community where ash trees are coming down left and right, which over time, we are going to lose all of our ash, but we need to slow the spread so that the economic impact to the homeowners isn't all at once and that it's moved slowly through our community. The only way to do that is to not allow potentially infested ash wood to come into our community.
Tree working people, you weren't happy with some of this language last week. Where are we with what's presented here? You know, we'd be eager to hear your thoughts on it, so.
Again, I'm Ray Bowe, Bowe's Tree Service.
Ray, why don't you come up here? It's easier for us to hear you, so, thanks.
I think there was a little misconception, I guess, because I didn't get up and speak last week. I don't have any problems with the new ordinance. We attend the South Dakota Arborists Convention every year down in Sioux Falls, and Dr. Bowe's been talking about what's been going on in Minnesota and other areas where the EAB has been. So we've been preparing for this. We've been knowing something like this is going to come down when it got closer. We figured out about a little less than 10% of our firewood sales are in the city limits. We cut down other hardwood trees besides ash wood throughout the year, hackberry, locusts, oak, walnut. We'll be keeping those. Before, we've always just mixed it with our ash. Now we're planning on keeping it separate, splitting it and holding on to it until the disease is found here. So hopefully, when the disease does get found here, we'll have enough stockpiled to supply our customers in the city limits with those other types of hardwoods. Hopefully, we'll be able to have enough to supply them until that four or five-year period has come where it's everywhere, and then the ordinance won't be as necessary anymore because it will be everywhere. So I should have gotten up last week and, you know, spoke, I guess.
We were headed for another week anyway, I think, so.
Yeah.
Are other tree business people, are you still hold objections to this, or, you know, come on up if you have more you want to add?
Keith Miller with KNA Log. I don't have a problem, and I agree with Aaron on the idea of the ordinance. Now, I already said last week that it's difficult to quantify whether or not this ordinance will indeed slow its spread, but I think that doing nothing, of course, is not a good option. My only contention was, we only have from September 1st, according to this ordinance, and Aaron and I are in agreement with this, during the non-flight period, September 1st to May 1st, to move this wood out of the city limits. During that time, with no beetle movement, there shouldn't be a problem with firewood being consumed in its finality by May 1st. And Aaron's contention is, you know, we don't have the ability to police or enforce that May 1st deadline. Well, the May 1st deadline is already enforceable to whatever extent by this. So if that wood is consumed, or even if it's not consumed, it's going to have to be vacated from the premises, whether it's firewood or any type of ash wood that meets the definitions contained in this ordinance. So if we would add or entertain the proposal to add those dates to this, then that would satisfy the movement of wood outside of the potential flight period and allow both Ray or anybody else who wished to supply firewood during that winter time, the ability to do so without making the proposed or possible infestation any more expedient.
Okay, so we're at a point where if any one of the council members would like to make an amendment to go along with what you want as compared to what is the motion that exists right now, or just general questions and comments from the council, so I'll open it up to the council. Jennifer?
Thank you. Keith, I appreciate, I appreciate the information that you've brought to us. I especially appreciate that Ray gave us his information this week because I was hoping to hear some comments from other folks in the audience in regards to this, in the business in regards to this. I've done some additional research in the last week on my own to try to figure out whether I thought that your proposal would be something that would work in our community. I can tell you that I have talked to folks who I know who do purchase firewood and to use for their fire pits or for inside their home in their wood burning fireplace places. I know that I've gone, driven by several houses where I've seen piles of wood covered up with snow. And now, we're just days from May 1st, and I'm not kidding, literal piles of wood. In fact, I have a sister who has a wood burning fireplace. I go to her house all the time. It's always burning, and she has a gigantic pile of wood in front of her house. And so I asked her about it. And, you know, so, anyway, my point being that I feel like, you know, Aaron is our expert. We pay him to be our expert. He did work with Mr. Bowe, who's a renowned expert in this field. And so I have to take the information they provide to us as expert opinion, and then I did follow up on my own, and I feel based on my own non-expert opinion that I am not prepared to support your request for an ordinance change. At this point, I am prepared to support what Aaron has provided to us. So, but I wanted to make that clear to you that I have done the additional work on this and really listened, I feel like really listened to your concerns, but have come to that decision.
You know, just some thoughts. The only way that we could verify that the firewood has been used in its finality is have people actually go in the backyards or have the tree service companies go and pick up the wood before May 1st if they don't use it. And then that's the only way to ensure that this wood is out by May 1st. And I understand that, you know, ash wood is a good firewood. It's a nice, it's a harder wood. It burns pretty clean for firewood. But at the same point, the only way we can make sure that it's gone is either go and look at everyone's backyards that it's gone, or you guys have to go and pick it up. You know, if there's ash wood in it, you have to go and physically remove it from the city. And I don't know if I want to put that on my tree service companies because you guys are going to be busy enough probably cutting trees down, and you're going to have that same window to cut that, those trees down. You won't be able to do it in the summer. So I'm kind of supporting this amendment. If something comes up, we've gone back and tweaked ordinances in the past. If we really have people clamoring that, you know, "I can't get firewood and I use it to heat my house," then we might have to look at it. But right now, I think, you know, like Mr. Bowe says, he's stockpiling his other stuff to get through the time period where, you know, he's not going to be able to use ash wood.
Aaron, is your only concern with including the dates, the spread, it spreading faster within this community?
Yes, basically, yeah. If it's, if it were to be left behind and not disposed of by May 1st, yes, if it's infested, it's going to, it's going to move out.
Refresh my memory on a piece of wood that's been cut and is sitting in a pile to be burned. How long is that bug in that wood?
One year.
One year.
Mm-hmm. And the other issue is, where do they, where do people dispose of this wood, you know, when it's time, when that May 1st date comes, where do they take it? You know, the landfill, if they take wood during the winter, they're going to have to do something with it before the flight season because they're not going to want Emerald Ash Bore flying all over the landfill. So it all, and their plan is to bury it. And so the issue will become is where do people take all this unused wood? And you paid for it upfront. Are you really going to want to just, are people going to willingly take this stuff and just go dump it somewhere? And where's that going to be?
Is this what we did with Elm?
With Elm, yeah, it could not stay in town. It's, you know, unless it was, you know, treated properly, it couldn't be, it couldn't be stored in town or transported in town.
And if I can clarify, you continue to send out letters regarding Elmwood?
Oh, yeah. We still look for, because we still don't want barked American elm in town because it can harbor the insect that carries Dutch elm disease.
Well, I'm not hearing a substitute amendment, or am I?
Another question. So what were some of the collection sites earlier for Elm outside of city limits?
Oh, the landfill, you know, that was a little diff, set up a little bit differently because it happened in the, you know, late 70s, early 80s, but most of it went to the landfill. It wasn't a highly sought after wood and still probably isn't in most cases.
Do you have ideas on where the collection sites out of town will be this time?
Well, the landfill would be at the top of the list because I've talked with Mike Scott about that, but, you know, I talked with Keith as well, is if he wanted to be a collection site, you know, we could look at that. And if anybody else wanted to be a collection site, I mean, we'd have to set up certain, you know, stipulations, I guess, you know, but because there's going to be, you know, homeowners and property owners next to these folks that maybe don't want them to be collection sites too. So it's, you have to be a little sensitive towards that as well. There's a lot of ash in the rural areas.
Thank you.
If I could address a couple of concerns in regard to Mrs. Slate Hansen. There's still going to be wood stored during the summer. You guys are just going to hope that it's not ash. You understand what I'm saying? The wood that you saw stored, do you have any idea if any of it was ash or if all of it was ash?
I don't have any idea what kind of wood it was. I think that's the main point, is that we don't know what kind of wood it is. So for us to have to go around the community and inspect people's wood piles to see if it is ash, it just causes more taxpayer dollars being spent on something that, you know, we don't want to spend taxpayer dollars on. We're warning people.
Aaron's already stated that that's occurring already with Elm.
That wood is... They're not supposed to store Elm with bark on it.
And you have to send out letters because of policing that same wood?
If we're out, if we're out, we do two Dutch elm disease surveys, so we drive the streets and avenues looking for Dutch elm disease. If we do spot somebody who cut down one of the trees that we marked and stored it, you know, piled it in their backyard or whatever, because we do go back and make sure those trees are cut down, yes, we'll send them a letter and say, "That can't be cut and stored in your backyard. It has to be disposed of properly by ordinance."
So then how would we be incurring additional costs?
Well, then we have to start doing it for ash too, so.
And that's...
We already are going to be.
But we're only doing it when, we're not driving every backyard looking for firewood. We're just going back to make sure that tree was cut down and disposed of properly. We're not driving the city doing just a firewood survey of sorts, getting out, looking at every pile of firewood, making sure there's no American elm in it.
So if a homeowner takes down an ash tree during the time when they're allowed to, how will it be determined that they removed their wood in the timeframes accordance with this proposal?
Repeat that again, though.
If someone takes down an ash tree during the timeframe specified in here, September 1st to May 1st, how will it be determined that that person removed that same wood, whether it's firewood or not, from their property?
If we go back, because we'll go back and make sure that tree was removed, if it's just stacked in the backyard where the tree was, then we would send them notification to dispose of it properly.
If it's a marked tree?
If it's a marked tree.
If it's an unmarked tree?
We don't, we're not driving around looking for unmarked trees that were cut down. Just the marked ones. Those are the ones we, if we mark it and send a letter of removal notice, we always go back to check to make sure it was removed in the time period specified.
Mr. Miller, I think, I think one of the things that I want to say here is that we have, we have all listened to your concerns three weeks now. And I appreciate that you have more questions, but you're repeating the same questions. Now, we're kind of at the point where you're repeating the same questions, and I, I mean, I don't know, maybe there's someone else here on the council who does want you to continue to repeat, but I know last week when we tabled, I was the only one who voted to continue the conversation. And at this point, I am prepared to move forward and have us vote. So I don't want us to get into a situation where the two of you are sitting there arguing in front of us. I think it does nobody any good. So I want you to know that that's where we're at, is I think we're prepared to vote on this.
I don't think they're arguing, but can I just ask a question on the title of this particular 5642? You've gone from transporting ash trees prohibited to ash trees in city limits prohibited. Is there, is there a purpose for that change? I know you're including now the storage of ash in the city limits.
Yeah, the purpose of the change was to be very, very clear because of, again, the questions and concerns that were raised last week, to be very clear what it is, what's intended by this ordinance. So that's why we put that, that what I consider to be much clearer language, ash trees in city limits prohibited. And that's, that deals with the removal, removed down ash trees.
Okay.
I don't know if that is what I get from that, but...
All right. I wanted to mention, Keith, you know, I appreciate how well-prepared and how much help you've given us on this, to this point, because usually people show up after the fact and complain, so I appreciate what you've done and coming here. I would want to add that you have a good argument that we can't make this all work 100%, but we've got all kinds of laws we can enforce 100%, but we still have the laws there, so they're there when we need them and when they can function. And, you know, in a pure sense, you have a valid point, but we don't act in that very often. So I have, I don't, you're still, okay?
One other question, please, for Aaron. After a tree is marked for removal, what period of time will be allowed for removal?
It'll be that September 1st through May 1st, but, I mean, we may have to tweak that because we can't wait till May 1st for the tree to be gone. I mean, we may give them a period of September 1st through April 1st, you know, just to make sure that it's all being disposed of properly before we hit the actual deadline in the ordinance.
Do we anticipate a lot of ashbore problems coming up? Is that, I mean, is that inevitable? Is it coming?
The Emerald Ash Bore?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. I mean, it's, it will arrive, we just don't know when, what day that's going to be.
So what is this going to cost our tree people with the landfill, if they have to haul them out to the landfill and dispose of them?
You know, I don't know what that pound per dollar is, but I know when we haul our big log truck, which is bigger than I think most tree services haul out there, it's under $100, and that's probably three, two or three trees, you know? So it's, it's fairly reasonable to dispose of wood at the landfill. fairly reasonable to dispose of wood at the landfill.
Ultimately gets passed on to the...
Gets passed back to the customer.
Oh, yeah.
To the person that's removing.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's that, or people just dumping it, you know, finding landowners that allow them just to dump logs. We just, you know...
Well, that's not going to be an effective result, is it?
Well, we wouldn't want that. No, that's why we want to set up collection sites for this. Yeah.
Okay. We have the amendment offered for motion. One thing I do need to do, when we made the motion to remove this from the table, perceived affirmation from everybody here, but I guess we did not actually take a voice vote on it. So, Carl, I guess, do we just presume the affirmation without the actual voice vote, or do you want to do that now?
We should have a voice vote.
All right. All those in favor of this discussion that we've had, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. All right. With that, with that, we now have the motion on the table, the substitute as offered by the city attorney. All those in favor of that amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no.
No.
Motion carries. And again, Keith, thanks for...
In opposing, I would like to thank the council for the gravity that they did give to my suggestions and for some of the language that was changed to benefit the arborist community. Thank you very much.
It wouldn't have happened without you.
Thank you.
Next, on our agenda, our...
Are there any more amendments? Are we ready to...
Oh, we, we've got to finish this off finally, don't we? It's been here for so long, I hate to say goodbye to it this morning, so.
Well, you won't be saying goodbye to it.
Okay. So we now have ordinance 1903, presented for possible second reading and final adoption as amended last week and this week. Do we have any other further discussion on this?
We already have a motion.
The motion exists from last week. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
Really briefly, I just would commend the, Aaron, I think you did a great job bringing this before us, and I agree, Keith assisted you in educating us, and sometimes it takes you weeks to educate us as this issue showed.
It's a really good job. Too bad it's all going to come out as a bad end. We're going to lose 20,000 trees. So. Other comments on the main motion? Carl?
Councilmember Remley?
No.
Ronain?
Aye.
Bunsmann?
Aye.
Slade Hansen?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bunsonus?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Ruck?
Aye.
Mayor Leeson?
Aye. Motion carries. Obviously, with the changes, we have substantially adjusted this to the point that this really can't be final adoption. This is only second reading. We will have third reading and final adoption on the agenda potentially for next week and give anybody who wants to come talk to us again one more opportunity, so, or council members. So it'll be on the agenda next week, one more time. Next, consent calendar, routine city business items A and B. Need a motion on that, please?
No.
Second. Motion, Slade Hansen, second by Bunsmann. Questions on either? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries. Under new business, we have two hearings tonight related to alcohol sales, and I'm presuming nobody is here to speak in opposition to either one. So I'd entertain a motion on the first, which is a two-day retail on-sale liquor license for the community theater. Move.
Second.
Motion, Remley, second by Ronain. Questions, anyone? All in favor of approving, then say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries. Second is transfer of a retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota Farm wine license with video lottery from Double Up Inc. at 206 South State and 524 South First Street to Viente Incorporated at 102 Sixth Avenue Southwest.
Move.
Second.
Motion, Remley, second by Ronain. Questions on any? Objections from anyone? All in favor, then say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries. Also, routine approval requested, the application for the Shrine Circus this week under item C. Need a motion on that?
Move approval.
Motion?
Second.
Ruck, second by Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries. Item D, bridge reinspection program resolution. Robin?
The two bridges that are being inspected every year at this point will be Eighth Avenue and 10th Avenue until we move those two into the construction phase like we're doing with Third Avenue this year. So, the resolution is basically to ask you to allow the reinspection as proposed through Clark Engineering.
Move.
Motion, Johnson, second by Ronain. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries. Back to you, Robin, item E for purchase of road oil.
The negotiating skills that you were anticipating last week for the road oils, we did have a proposal already from Flint Hills. They said they would stand behind that price. The other price that we got was from Jebro out of Sioux City, Iowa, about $12, a little over $12, a ton more. We're recommending the price from Flint Hills as the one to move ahead with.
Move approval. Second.
Motion, Ruck, second by Olson. Questions on this one? All in favor of approving that, then say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no.
So what were the negotiating skills?
That's my point.
Item F, payment request to CWF Masonry and Construction for concrete work. Robin?
Okay, we have a pay request from CWF in the amount of 2,700. This is basically their mobilization cost to get started with the project. Their mobilization was 3,000 less than 304 retainage. So, we're recommending approval of that at this point.
Move. Second.
Motion, Bunsonus, second by Olson. Questions on it? Carl, roll call to approve 2,700 to CWF Masonry.
Councilmember Ruck?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Bunsonus?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Slade Hansen?
Aye.
Bunsmann?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Remley?
Aye.
Mayor Leeson?
Aye. Motion carries. You've all been provided with a list of bills submitted for payment. Now I'd entertain a motion to pay those.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Johnson, second by Olson. Questions on any of them? Carl?
Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Bunsmann?
Aye.
Slade Hansen?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bunsonus?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Ruck?
Aye.
Mayor Leeson?
Aye. Motion carries. Item H is payroll from March 31 to April 13, and city share of social security, old age, survivors, insurance, retirement, health, and life.
Move. Second.
Motion, Bunsonus, second by Ruck. Carl?
Councilmember Ruck?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Bunsonus?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Slade Hansen?
Aye.
Bunsmann?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Remley?
Aye.
Mayor Leeson?
Aye. Motion carries. Item H is payroll from March 31 to April 13, and city share of social security, old age, survivors, insurance, retirement, health, and life.
Move. Second.
Motion, Bunsonus, second by Ruck. Carl?
Councilmember Ruck?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Bunsonus?
Aye.